...19th Finance Committee Meeting of the City Council. Anna Burke, you would please call the board.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Vaughn.
Present.
Counselor Finn.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Kamuchi.
Present.
Counselor Hughes.
Present.
Chairman Paul.
Present.
Members, we have formally agreed to the record the open meeting law, which is as follows. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through a panel meeting. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmission are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and commensurate. And as I mentioned earlier before meeting, committee of the hall, as the finance committee, we do have a regular city council meeting, probably to start at 7:30, at which point we'll open that up and essentially go back into finance committee for the record, and we'll open this up here today. And now we will reassess the finance committee meeting at 7:20. This time, I would like to call the finance committee meeting back to order at 7:32. Counselors, as we all know, we were deliberating in the well last week pertaining to Counselor for email appropriation in the downtown improvement financing district. We had quite a debate with some takeaway questions, the administration, and I recognize the strong work of Counselor Gary and also Jennifer Man, who impressively had those questions out that way, which, thank you Jennifer for that. And obviously Bill, on your end, could turn that right around. I know that there was a lot of information, there was a lot of spirited dialogue, back and forth, completely helped to shape some of the conversation here this evening. Counselors were also afforded the opportunity to engage with the administrations and consultants and colleagues here this evening. But, Mr. Gary, I'd like to recognize you, I don't know if you have any commentary to add.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jim, and it's good to be here in the honorable office of counsel. I don't particularly have any commentary to add beyond the answers that I provided last Friday. I understand there are questions with respect to those answers. And I also thank you for recognizing Jennifer Man, because quite candidly, I didn't see her messaging until the following morning, even though she sent it at 11:15 in the prior evening. But I also wanted to recognize and commend the members of our team, Rob Stevens from the planning board, and Wes Wilson from Desmond Associates, Tom Clark from Kennedy, and Jim Fassies, everyone participating in gathering that information so that we could get it turned around before the weekend, so that we could, the counselors could have an opportunity to review the information, fund the additional questions if they think of progress.
Thank you, counsel. Yes, before I open it up to members of the body, I was just going through some information that was disseminated last week. I did have a question, I believe, this is Ryan. Have any, any kind of?
I'm not Ryan, but.
Okay, sorry. I saw that. Yes, Mr. Clark.
Okay. There was an email that came over from Ryan Kennedy, I believe, which was essentially a cost breakup pertaining to the conversation that we had here that evening, where it was building subsurface, subterranean, versus pulling it up and building it under it. So I don't know if you can answer that question.
Is it on the numbers itself?
Yeah, numbers, theory.
Mr. Clark would be the person also, but Mr. Wilson, and also the line of advice as well. Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, obviously, you're familiar with the information, right?
Yes.
Option four?
We've got option four, I guess.
So, option four, in view of, I was trying to get an understanding, so obviously, if you put option three, you have option four, which is roughly, you know, maybe around the so, yeah. From a construction standpoint, when you think about, like, building a parking garage where the first level is subterranean in the proper?
Yes, underground.
So when you take that into consideration, is there a particular reason why one would opt to do something that way?
That might be better suited by a design professional.
But from a construction?
From a construction standpoint, it's certainly desirable.
How probably?
The less you're on the ground, the less challenges there are, certainly. You don't know what's in the ground, so I think, for instance, it's quicker, certainly, to just put in conventional foundations instead of taking it down into the ground. So for both of those reasons, you would be.
But I mean, is there a certain level of structural integrity that comes with that?
I don't believe so. I mean, both structures would be designed to withstand the forces of nature imposed on them, so.
That's correct, yeah, they would be designed to be so. Pulling the structure out of the ground will increase the massing, I think, and that's something that we talked about last week, but I'm looking at the location of the garage relative to Revere Road, the parkway. You pull it out of the ground, you're adding another story to the garage, it has height and mass to it, and a structural engineer or an architect, like, can tell from doing a number of these parking structures that, you know, the context to the adjoining developments, planned developments, and also the neighbors across the street, that is a very big point of contention moving forward, and it should be one of the objectives, that it needs to be balanced with regards to the design itself.
So let me ask you a question to that, and it goes from Desmond, where the response came. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you mentioned, you know, structural changes, the footprint, right, we're going up. I caught something in an email that was roughly 11, it would be an 11-foot increase around the whole structure.
Right, four to four is typically what we have, 11 feet.
So 11 feet, that would, that would change, I think, option four from option three, where essentially go up 11 feet.
Coming up one level or better.
So, in my mind, I start to process this, right, we're looking at a potential cost savings to the taxpayer of almost $8 million between option three and option four. Parking spaces, I believe, because that would obviously be my objective, we would concede three spaces going from option four from option three.
That's correct.
So three parking spaces, 11 feet, which as I kind of go through that, meant that it's essentially the size of a basketball, right? And we save close to $8 million.
That's correct. But, as I said before, I think a lot of objectives have to be understood when we go with regards to the size of the garage. Parking garages are very, very expensive. And, you know, what I showed, can I show this to you?
Please, do, please.
This is a good example of where we're at, one, two, three, four, five. If you take those top two levels, that would be relative size of the garage, drop out of the ground, facing Revere Road, where. I think the two adjacent developments are going to be in that vicinity of height, ideally, carry down some of that, so it reduces the massing. But this is what you'd have, you'd have a three-bait garage, one, two, three, and pick up off, and in that level, that's what the height would be.
Without a doubt, there's a cost savings going on the ground. Without, and I think this is important, because I looked at, it would be a cost savings in terms of the actual structural footprint, but you would not, would not compensate anything from a static sample, as it's all laid between option three and option four. So visually, right, the money that we're going to exhaust in the building, again, it's going to be a story higher, but you're not compromising essentially the walk, right? It's not going to be, all right, I think we used this word last week, stone cold.
The architectural sensitivity, yes.
Thank you.
There is definitely going to make an effort, and there is within the budget, a parking garage, and you may need a certain amount of architectural sensitivities with this stuff.
So again, the difference, option three, option four, cost savings, about seven and a half million bucks. You're going up basically a basketball court, basketball hoop size, you're compensating, but you're conceding three spaces.
That's correct.
Want to process that. I know the gentleman behind you is looking at it, he's got.
Thank you, counsel, for that, to that. And Jeff asked with the BSC group, in addition to helping the team with the urban renewal process and urban renewal plan, we were also asked to look at the urban design elements of the Hancock Lot as well as the larger downtown area. So, prior to Desmond really getting engaged with the design of this, one of the things we did is, from a urban design perspective, was look at the massing of the garage, as Mr. Wilson has referred to. So we looked at the height of the garage relative to the lot itself, the flooding, properties that are there now, that are expected to remain, the properties that are expected to be built on that lot, and try to get a balance of the massing of the garage relative to those proposed projects. So if the garage didn't hold a homeless space, we want the development, the residential buildings, the commercial buildings, to really be the buildings that dominate that space, especially since we're creating that new civic space in the middle of the Hancock Lot. And if the garage overpowers that, it takes away from the feeling of pedestrian comfort and the aesthetics of that space. So when we were going through this urban design process, we looked at a number, we call 3D models, of massing of the structure, depending on how many stories above ground, and if you went one story below ground, how much would that increase the massing? And at that point, the team decided that it was a balance between kind of the urban design, what we're trying to create there, inviting public space, as well as inviting to the neighbors around it, as well as, you know, the cost of the garage. So I understand the cost difference, but there was also a thought process related to the urban design and the visual impact of this garage to that new development site in the Hancock Lot.
Do you subscribe to the line of reasoning that in terms of placement, it will not directly, but be within, you know, a chip shot away from a 15-story building? I'm only asking that because you say overwhelming, I knew it through the last meeting. Is 11 feet additional for seven and a half million dollar cost savings, where no structural integrity is compromised, that's what I heard. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not an expert, but I've talked about this enough where I'm getting a better understanding. Is 11 feet sort of the tipping point?
Again, it's relative, you mentioned the 15-story building, which is not directly flooding the garage, so relative to that structure, the extra story may not make much of a difference, because that structure still has you from all sides of the building. When you look at buildings such as LBC project, which is a lower building, again, which is not right adjacent to it, but that size building is similar work built at the West of Chestnut project, that kind of massing of building, which is, I think it's five stories of residential or two stories of pedestal, tops of a seven-story building, you know, an extra story of a garage next to a building like that does make a difference, because you want to get those residential units above the height of the parking garage as much as possible, because then they become much more marketable.
Right, understood. It's, and I know the part of the LBA agreement that I'm just going to paraphrase and really kind of publically write out the non. But essentially, part of the original LBA agreement was that this garage design comes back to the city council, right? So we're talking about here this evening, basically an authorization of $8 million, which is going to give you folks, the team, an opportunity to kind of use the summer and come up with a final design for that. So as I kind of do this and ponder where I'm at between option three and option four, when you come back to the city council, is there going to be a low grade and an above grade option?
Well, it presented to us, looking at that would increase the cost of design, because essentially you have to design two different garages. So that's the feedback that I've gotten from our people. We, at this juncture, believe that the science and the comments that were made by both Mr. Fats and Mr. Wilson, that the massing is generally a key issue for neighbors, because it's this big building, it's not just the height, it's not only the height, it's just the whole mass of it, and it runs from Revere Road to a point that's three-quarters of the way through the lot. So it is close, and the civic space is breathing space, so to speak. And so you want to scale, a scale that when you're in that space, you don't want all 15 story buildings, you want some diversity. But the bulk of the buildings will be five stories, and as Mr. Fats said, you want to try to get that up. So as do our ability to design two separate structures over the course of summer would be a costly proposition.
So the answer is basically no, right? And it's okay, I just want to understand procedurally, you know, what that means.
What we had hoped to do over the summer is engage in further outreach to the community to, as I mentioned last week, to solicit their input as to the features in the civic space, as to the facade that will drape the garage, the historic context, we talked about that at the community meeting we had over so ago, and actually, people were favorably impressed, and I've been to other garage meetings where the principal concern for a lot of people was the traffic, as well as how it's going to look, what the mass of it will be. So it's not, and you're correcting the line of questioning as to structural integrity, build, they're not going to build something that doesn't have the requisite structural integrity.
Right, but it's.
Yeah, but it's, but it's the really, the differentiator, in some ways, and we talked about this a little bit before meeting season, as we're looking at some of these options, is the bare bones type of garage that we see, I think, you know, to get that economy of scale, you know, per space, on a square footage scale, is the kind of garage you might see as urban mall or suburban shopping center, or as an urban office park, often toward the back of the park itself, whereas the type of interest that we are getting for downtown Quincy is from many organizations that currently are the 128, want to come into a historic city, and be enlightened by the activity of the city, obviously, be close access to transit options, and of course, to Boston, and that's sort of the market, particularly in the case of Fox Rock, that's the market that they will be marketing to. So we want to have a scale, an urban scale, that is consistent with the city's urban scale, historic buildings that make up our downtown.
Completely understand, you know, for me, this parking garage is a number one priority. Some would even argue, publisher had been built first, I understand, but everybody, everybody wants a parking garage, and everybody wants to get it correct. I'm going to kind of open it up to my council members, but here's what my mind has, and understand about creating something that is cohesive to the neighborhood, but what we're talking about here is an increased height of 11 feet, and saving, I'm just using round numbers, it's a little less, but $8 million. It's almost $8 million, but it's a lot, it's a lot of money, right, and as we think about community values. I mean, I understand the finances completely support $8 million, they do, but think about it from the perspective of, if it was $8 million less in terms of your debt obligation, with the current taxpayers, so people who are already here, would they realize any savings anywhere? And I guess that's, that's kind of a debate that I would continue to work through here this evening, but that's, you know, I look at option three and option four, and those numbers just really jump off the page, so. Counselor Kamuchi, Counselor Leanne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Bill, for getting the additional information, I know it was short turnaround time, so I appreciate that. Came here today, woke up this morning, ready to buy, buy a garage, Bill. I'm in the buyer's mode, right? And when I finally saw this today, because we had some technical difficulties over the weekend, the, the, but when I saw this, I was actually thrilled, it's great, this seems to be far more in line, option number four seems to be far more in line with the numbers that I was talking about from some of the industry studies for the Boston area, price per square foot, a little bit more, but, but that's understandable, given what you folks had said about the construction market and time and whatnot. So I feel like I'm all in for option four, right? I think that makes perfect sense. That's what I was driving at on Thursday night with many of my questions, and that whole, the whole discussion about balancing the taxpayers' expenditure in the downtown versus what the downtown needs to grow. I don't know that you'll find anyone who disagrees with the premise that we need, we need a garage downtown, and it should be a high-quality garage, a safe garage, and it should be aesthetically pleasing, and be a cohesive piece of the fabric of the neighborhood. So I think we're all on the same page with those thoughts. It seems, though, that where the rubber meets the road, between option number three and option number four, we have a difference of, I have a difference of opinion with the administration. Again, you're talking about a significant, you're not losing many spaces, three spaces, that's negligible, and it's a significant price difference. You go from, you go from what you had presented us, which is $116 per square feet, $116 per square foot, when we talked about on Thursday, the national average is $57 per square foot, and the Boston average is $67 per square foot. The budget, the square foot, per square foot cost for option number three is $116 per square foot versus $87 per square foot for option number four, without the loss of spaces, because that was a big concern that you folks had expressed on Thursday, was, eh, it's going to change the building, you know, the structure, you're going to lose a lot more spaces, and I was thrilled to see that you did. I mean, we did, you know, when they actually put the pen to paper, showed that we wouldn't. And I get that, you know, what Wes had said, the neighbors across the street are an important consideration, and I don't discount that, but again, I just, if we're, Counselor Clark's question was, do we lose any of the aesthetics between options three and four? And the answer was no, you can still build an aesthetically pleasing garage in option number four, which is $8 million cheaper. I don't know that it makes a lick of difference whether or not it's, I don't know, an extra 11 feet higher when it's next to a 15-story building, I mean, the difference in those sizes. And I not once, not once did I hear anybody, even back with Streetworks, talk about this great concern of how the aesthetics are going to look to the folks of Revere Road when we were contemplating raising the cap on the height of the buildings. I think this body's done it twice during the pendant, and maybe another time before I was here, but when I was here, when we signed the LDA with Streetworks, we raised it, I want to say at 10 or 12, and then when the Uconnal project was contemplated, I think we raised it again to 15. Not once did anyone say, well, we have to consider the aesthetics of the folks who live on Revere Road. I don't recall that coming, but now, when it's an $8 million difference in garage, suddenly that's the only thing. And correct me if I'm wrong, is that not the only difference? Other than you save $8 million, you lose three spaces. You could, that's the only difference, is the massing and how it aesthetically looks, and 11 feet, right?
It's principally the massing. Unlike the Uconnal building, now obviously, a 15-story building would be visible from everywhere around the perimeter, but it's not directly across the street from the residential community on the other side of Revere Road. There would be also potential issues as to, if you're going up a story, there's more spaces in the underground portion, and you go up a story, so if, whatever we determine to do through consultation with the community and with this body for review, the facade is exactly that, it's a facade. So you're going to increase the elements to the side if you go up further to gain those spaces that are currently underground. And those, those are the issues that we've been concerned about, is we not, and it's probably, we've actually talked about, we've done, Mr. Fats has done 3D modeling, but we've also, you know, we have talked about doing an actual model, because the garages are large, are large structures, and if it, what, since it's a point to be located within, with a community surrounding it, it becomes the centerpiece if you don't handle it correctly architecturally. And we don't want a big hulking garage to become the centerpiece for what we hope will be a revitalized civic space for the residents of the city.
But that's why we're paying Wes the big bucks, he's going to make sure it's not a big hulking garage, he's a guy who has a favorite garage. I mean, I'm glad we have him on the team, glad we have a garage aficionado who's going to make sure that regardless of what we build, I'm saying I have confidence in the team, that regardless of, whether it's option three or option four, and there's an extra 11 feet on it or not, that he's going to make it look good, that he's going to make it look the best it possibly can be. So I'm less concerned about that. Now let me get into, and I know you have your marching orders tonight, you know, you're doing what you're doing, but we're really not going to determine anything through consultation on the garage, right? I mean, the decision's been made.
On the what?
On the garage. Option three versus four.
In terms of its footprint and size?
Option three, in terms of option three versus option four.
The administration is advocating for option three.
Okay. So I'm going to throw out probably a series of things, I may ask a couple more questions and turn it over to my colleagues, but at some point, before we take a vote, I might throw out a couple of possibilities, things to do tonight, and I'll tell you where I'm coming from, this is no surprise here. I prefer option number three, okay, if that wasn't painfully obvious. I prefer option number three, I think saving the taxpayers $8 million dollars and getting a very similarly aesthetically pleasing garage without losing spaces, visually the same, look not compromised, is the notes I wrote down from what? That, to me, is worth the savings of $8 million. So, so I'm going to push for that, okay? And I don't, I'm concerned, again, came here tonight to buy a garage, okay, to fund a garage, and I want to do that, I want to move this forward, I think it's important for any developer who's looking at the downtown now, looking at buildings and working something in their head, I think it's important just for this body to say, we're committed to building the public infrastructure necessary, because it's not just the garage, it's also the public infrastructure, right? I think it's important to take that step, so you guys have the, you know, the whole team has the summer to work on putting things together, and, you know, more developers will come in and talk to Mr. Fats and the mayor about visions on other projects, so I think it's, we need to move the ball forward. So my goal is to move the ball forward. I just don't want to move the ball forward in the direction that you want to, so we'll see, and I'm just one guy, I mean, thing might pass eight to one a different way, but I'm going to do what I can do to try and push it in this direction tonight. So let me first ask you, how much runway do you need between now and September for everything else other than the garage, in terms of funding? Or is that too difficult to tease out?
Yeah, it is.
I mean, you don't need the full $8 million, it's not like you're going to take out a lawn in the next three months, equivalent amount of $8 million, this is long-term stuff that we're looking at here, long-term work, right?
This long-term work, we do, we do have a number of schedules that we want to achieve, and so certainly, for example, the land taking that was submitted as part of this proposal is sort of like the precursor. is sort of like the precursor, because there are timelines associated.
Right.
Also, there's timelines associated with the construction of the garage. We indicated we want a next construction beginning in 2018.
So that, something like that, the other infrastructure work, I'm happy to vote, and again, this is just my vote, I'm not speaking for my colleagues, but I'm happy to vote on all that funding tonight, so that you guys have runway to keep working. But my hope is, I feel like we're, myself in the administration position, are at odds right now, and we'll see what our colleagues think about saving $8 million in exchange for $11 million in an already very high run. But I want to, I want to find a pathway forward here. So if folks want to, we as a body feel that that $8 million is worth saving and trading off of three spaces and 11 feet, then I want to be able to work through, and we'll come back to this, work through a way that you guys can still move forward while we continue to hash out perhaps what may be a difference on option three versus option four in the administration and the council positions. But on that same line, what's the point, and I always ask to be, you know, acute about it, but what's the point of us voting again on the design of the garage if the garage design is determined tonight, between tonight and when we next see? Do you know what I'm saying? So like, what Council Finn had pointed out at the last meeting is, well, the design's going to come back to us, the design's going to come back to us. But at that point, it's, we're already in it for probably a couple million bucks or something in terms of design, and then we're already, both time and money's been spent. I have a feeling you're going to say to us, well, that would be going back to the starting point if we pushed option three at a later date and not tonight, right? So what's the, what's your take on that?
Well, as you're correct in stating, the design will come back, but the other elements of that design, including the civic space, are all elements that we will be refining during the course of the summer. But if we were to have to go into design between, structural design between the two, and maybe Mr. Wilson will want to comment on that, and ask for the savings, because I did the same thing with, I'm sure everybody, you and Jim referenced, some of that savings, that $7 million, $8 million savings, there could be a trade-off as to the facade, as to other elements that will be altered, if you will, from the approach that we're running.
I think a good way to think about it, too, is the difference between option three and option four is more of a functional component of the design, not so much the architectural component of the design. Because that, the two functions, you know, the below grade, the above grade, that's more, like I said, it's how the garage operates, you know, from a functional standpoint.
But you need to know that for your design work for the next three or four years.
Absolutely. That affects our structural analysis.
Right.
It affects our foundations, it affects a lot of different components of the garage. For us to effectively move forward with the design, that component of the design, we need to have a decision on either option one or option two.
Option three or option four.
Yeah, three or four, sorry. You know, we could move ahead forward with both designs, now it's a duality of effort. And with the duality of effort comes a duality of costs, everything else from a design perspective.
Right.
I think what would be put in front of you the next round is, once we got the functional aspect of the foundation, nobody's going to care whether it's 10 by 10 or 12 by 12-footed, this is a little ground, starting into, as Mr. Gary indicated, the amenities, the facade elements, the civic space, and things of those elements. That's, would be the next presentation at work. What are these elements? Then you're going to have, again, more options to look at.
But if, and I know it's probably not your place in terms of what the LDA says, but if we're getting another vote, by that point, we're really too far to say no, right? I mean, the council in four months gets presented with the design, and we say no. It's not a real option, is what I'm saying, at that point.
Hopefully, the functional component, whether it's above grade or below grade, that decision has been made, so we can start running that direction. The other elements that you're going to see at the end of the summer are going to be more of the articulation of the facade, the civic space, what do we do in the civic space? How are we treating those spaces?
And that makes perfect sense.
And you should have alternatives to those to make the decision on. And I think, I think that's part of the process.
So the, so the way forward, that we have to, at some, we have to somehow tonight authorize option three or option four in order for the design base to move forward?
For us to move forward as designers, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's helpful. A couple of quick questions. Tell me what the maintenance cost per year is for the proposed?
Which garage, three or four?
I'd love both, if you have.
Yeah.
Four's the?
Option three's going to be slightly harder.
It is, because you're running around, right? You're going to move the air.
MVP systems, yeah, and sprinkler systems, those are going to be higher.
So it's perhaps not just the $8 million in construction costs that you're saving, but over the longevity and lifespan of, I think you had said 75 years, 70 years you opened the garage?
Seven, 75, 80 years, something like I said, my favorite garage's going to be 100. Downtown Boston's going to be 120, 24.
So, so there's also that consideration in terms of?
That's correct.
Longevity of costs? Okay. All right, thank you. I, and I'll defer to my colleagues, I just want to say this, Mr. Jim, then. I was trying to think of this when I got the numbers today, I was running through the head, what that, what that money means, right? $8 million's a big difference. Not only could we, does that ensure more money to make sure that the garage is maintained in the future to a standard that won't leave us in a position where we're, you know, a future council is willing to tear it down like we did with the Ross garage, but also when, when I spoke at the Thursday meeting about this balance of what else we, what else we can do with taxpayer money? Yeah, it's in the DIF district, but the money that we don't use, it's in the DIF district, comes back for all of us as residents of the city, it gets spread throughout the city for infrastructure and other uses. And I got to thinking about the Sterling, the cost for us, for the city, with our 26% input on the cost of the Sterling is $15 million. We are building a new middle school in West Quincy for an expenditure from the city of $15 million. So when you're talking about an $8 million difference, that gets you halfway to something like a brand-new middle school. And I know, you know, we have great schools in the city of Quincy, a lot of them need some, some work, but we're, we're building new schools. But just in terms of the magnitude of the difference between option three and option four, that gets you a lot of infrastructure throughout the city, not just in downtown, that $8 million. It's half a new school, right there, in one vote that we take. So, but thank you, Mr. Chairman, I may answer questions. I'm kind of going to go back to that. That's done for now, thanks.
Thank you, you know, for all your visual awareness. You know, we're talking about the height increase, literally the basketball, $8 million, we're basically putting a basketball on top of what's presented today. Real money, adult money. Council Ian.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Gary.
Good evening.
I don't disagree with what you probably said, you had spoken, talked about the need for this garage, and we want to see the growth of commercial development, you know, to help offset residential tax base. We want us to go down to the ground, develop that, accomplish the need for parking that already exists, let alone five, 10 years from now, and everything is filled up in the downtown and is used. So I do want to do this, I do want to move forward, but I just want to make sure that we do it right, and that we do it together with residents, with business owners, with the administration and the councils all together moving forward. So, that being said, moves into my first sort of comments on this, the mitigation of communication with the residents and with the business owners. I know Council Board has touched upon the content of communication and the need for it at Thursday's meeting, but I just, you have replied to in the email about some of the steps that you guys want to take moving forward to help engage the community in this process. I just want to dive into something specifically when it comes to the parking situation during construction. You talked a lot about promoting the businesses in the area, how to get notices and updates out to people, but with the parking structure, you know, during construction, how do you plan on bringing in feedback from that and adjusting it as it goes? Because we have something that we'd like to implement, the she hears every 1300 and 10 spaces that will be out there during the construction period, but for whatever reason, if when that starts, and all the construction starts, you know, again, for whatever reason, that parking structure doesn't work, or we need to move things around, how do you plan on sort of getting that feedback and then changing things as it goes?
Well, we, as I mentioned in my reply, we do plan on conferring with the business community and the adjacent communities more aggressively. We had the last meeting, we had a meeting for hotline, phone line, several of the councils referenced the lines set up for the Ford Ridge lane closures, social media, obviously we're going to be more engaged with social media, we're going to try and get as much information out in real time. We, you know, as I mentioned, we'll be activating, have already activated electronic signs, but we'll have fixed signs, but we intend to be speaking with business owners, for example, about putting information on their websites that will direct their patrons to available parking. Likewise, we want to engage with social media, engage directly with their employees on strategies where their employees may park a location other than where their customers would be parking. The courthouse is unutilized at present time, and as I said in my reply, we understand that we will be phasing out 150 spaces during the course of this summer on a phased basis, but we believe there is available inventory within those 1300 and 10 spaces to absorb those vehicles. The real crunch will come beginning of next year in January, February, when the local reconstruction could start on the garage, and we're going to augment that supply. And we are engaged in a number of strategies, including talking with the private parties that have some parking areas available that can be utilized over the day and in the evening. So it's going to require us to bring new tools to that.
And I think that's where they're going to do a phase period before, before next term of construction starts, because that's a prime opportunity to go back and say, okay, we phased out 150 spaces, what did we do right, what did we do wrong, what should we improve to find, you know, we can make sure to be proactive about that and moving forward. It's going to be ahead of regardless, but we can try to betterize as much as possible. You talked about the dedicated phone line, the hotline, can you, I was going to med for a second there, because I remember when I was working in the downtown and the construction had just started, probably four, five years ago, when a water line would break at 10:30 and I had to open up at 11 o'clock, you know, I would be directed to probably five different people, because every person I called would do one of these, you know, it's not me, it's them, it's not me, it's them, and before I knew it was 12 o'clock, and we still didn't have the answers. And it's not to say that accidents don't happen, things happen, we have a very old infrastructure, so, you know, there's maps that are provided to us, and we have to go based off the information we're given, and simply in front or it's outdated. So it happens, and I understand that it's going to happen moving forward, but again, that sort of, you call one number, you get directed to 15 different people, it becomes very frustrating when you're under a time constraint to get some answers. So will that hotline be that one-stop shop, regardless of what has been done, whether it's gas lines being worked on, water lines, electric lines?
Yes, we, we hope that will be the case. We had issues that arose as a result of work being done that wasn't particularly a city project, or even part of the downtown revitalization, it might have been just an angry or...
Oh, absolutely. We saw that happen all the time, where you see Comcast out here or something, it has nothing to do with the city, but to me, as a business owner, it was just, well, it's happening in the downtown, it must be downtown related.
And we do want to have a team that's able to interact right away with the utilities. We've had ongoing meetings with them on these issues. As you know, we've had folks who were in current or on the street, Tom Musso, everybody knows in terms of his updates, but he's out on the street every good day, talking to the business owners, trying to keep them apprised of winning particular projects that are city-inspired, are going to be happening, and try to work with them in the eyes of disruption to their particular business. Likewise, we've had other, work is going from business to business, and so we do intend on stepping up that activity as we get closer to the construction that's going to start soon, actually demolitions will start soon on the LBC block. And through the summer, we want to work with those employers, with those business owners in that particular vicinity to, you know, step up our means.
Okay, and then, so just moving on from that, onto, you know, more logistics on this, so when you mentioned that, we want construction to start in the beginning of next year, so let's say, if it's January, moving back from that, and as Council Croll mentioned, she asked a little bit, sort of, this timeline of what you guys have to do in the next three months of the summer, but let's say construction starts in January, moving back from that, you know, where are the timelines for, you know, here are the final plans for engineering, here is the final date that we can get financing, and here is the last fee for, you know, community input. Do you guys have a structure from today until the beginning of the construction, that you sort of say, okay, end of July, we need to have, you know, all input in for the facade, or, you know, end of August, we need to get all of our financing? Do you guys have a structure of that, so that, again, you can all just be a part of that and understand what's to come?
Yes, we are going to create that structure, working with our consultants, working, working with our, of course, and with Desmond, BSC, so that we can involve all stakeholders, of course, including the council, so that we can have those meetings and can still stay on track as to the structural component of the building. That's, that's the key, that's what requires the work that Desmond Associates does, the engineering issues. We've been able to advance it over the course of the last year to preliminary design based upon a number of factors, including looking at what we need by way of capacity. The capacity, you know, over the years varied in the terms of projections that were available at those particular times. Now we're at 730 spaces, which we believe is the right capacity, and we're able to achieve that somewhat by scanning the footprint just four feet to gain some extra spaces. So we will continue to tweak it, but for us to be able to start construction when we're projecting, we need to be heading toward the final design as to the structure and its capacity.
And to that extent, again, I think it would just be helpful to have some construction files, something to do with, in these areas that you're going to be updating with those notices, and this, you know, again, this is the, and it's limiting timeline, right? It's going to change as this happen, and, you know, you get freaks, snowstorms, I can't remember, anything, right? You just have that structure to say, okay, this is the date that we anticipate to have the absolute final design, this is the date we have the final design on the facade, this is the final date that we can go back and turn to the council to ask, or to approve that design. Do you guys have an idea right now as to whether you set up a new council for that? Is it going to be first of September, or is it going to be in November to get ready for December? Do we have an idea of what that looks like right now?
We're hoping, one of the advantages we have here is, this is design-built, so the involvement of the Pentagon, which is a company that has built this, both in terms of developing with Desmond Design, is a methodology for fast track. So in the, in the fall, we are hoping to be back to show timelines, certainly, for example, I know that Mr. Casey, who represents Mr. O'Connell, they can essentially protect the timeline on every day of construction. So we want to bring that information to the public as quickly as possible. So we want to bring that information to the public as quickly as possible. And of course, we will still be following that.
Okay, and you have a, again, it's actually great that you have that, that timeline up there, just to say, you know, we're working on the, or we're doing the architecture, or we're doing infrastructure work, or we're projected to go back from the council and state. It's even, not a timeline during construction, but before. So we're all on the same page on, as to what steps are happening and what's to come. With the garage, just now talking about the revenue that we're looking at, I know, again, we're still talking about the design phase, but once it is up and running, what are we anticipating for the revenue? Have you looked at what are percentages for net profit that we want to see coming in every day or every month from the garage?
Well, that's another aspect of the funding that we're seeking is, and Councilwoman Sheen spoke to this actually last Thursday.
I spoke to everything.
You did, indeed. That the, a comprehensive plan for traffic and parking management in the city that the focus on the parking management component includes the interplay of these public street spaces that we talked about in terms of needs. We need to put together a revenue plan, and that's one of the aspects that we want Desmond to work with us on, is to look at what revenue we need to extract, to deal from that garage that keeps us competitive. We know we're gonna be more competitive than Boston, or Ambridge, or Zomago, for example. But we need to find that sweet spot as to generating revenue. The financial projections of R K G on the DIF did not include a number, and so they've been very conservative, but it did not include a number for the revenue generated by the garage. So we would like to have that as part of the plan for how to manage the facility properly. And as, as I've stated, part of that balance is a maintenance plan for the garage, to know what it's gonna cost to maintain it and to staff it. We do want it staffed, we want a band instructor, we want folks to have a sense of safety and security that comes from having a garage that has personnel there around the clock. And so we've looked at strategies as to how to do that. But the key ingredient is coming up with the right formula for generating revenue there that's going to not discourage a major, quite a few.
Right, yeah, it's only to exhaust all that that's possible. Not only that, because we do the parking, off of the side security of creating more parking, you know, there is that significant revenue we can pull in, and I'd like to see that exhaust as well. So I think that pretty much covers it. And then that timeline, if we could work on that, you know, up and running on that, you said that there's continued expectations on its website. If we can get that out on our calculations, what we're interested in from, you know, from basically today, throughout the summer, to the day of construction, that would be wonderful. So again, we all just be on the same page as to what we're going to expect throughout this summer, and I'll be to the top. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Counselor, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sitting here reflecting, thinking that as a legislator, the last thing I want to be deeply engaged with is the design specifically. But I can understand people's concerns as it relates to the, to the fiscal side of things. But I was looking back again through the L D A. I just want to walk through this, because there's a section that occurs just under the certain index of certain operative definitions. And one of it includes the adoption of the authorization to build the garage and its purpose pursuant to a guaranteed maximum price G M P contract, and the adoption of the bond authorization to fund construction thereof. So we have two components of that, correct?
That is correct.
Have we had a guaranteed maximum price contract presented to us to come before this body? It's not...
You have.
No. And so as you're moving forward with design, as we move forward with this, any person on this body who is not happy with that design, certainly can vote in the negative on any, whatever that contract is that comes before us. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement.
Right. So again, it, it's granted that, you know, we're authorizing money, we're authorizing a bond, it's covering a lot more specifically than the garage at the present moment. So the idea that we are out of the picture, that we simply authorize the bond, in my mind, still, it's not quite accurate. So that if you're, if we're coming back with the design specifically, that's associated with this guaranteed maximum price contract, and I'm not sure how many people are gonna be that, you know, greatly disturbed by it at any point, but the bond line, if we're not happy, we can vote against it.
That's right.
Now, the other thing, just to be clear, is that, and again, I don't want this plan stuff offering you evidence or whatever, but if, at this point, right now, at this moment, with this bond authorization, if you're not happy with the, the initial concepts that are being presented here in the city, you're free to vote against it, correct?
That is correct.
So, you know, part of it is, we negotiated in many respects, right, this land disposition given, pre-well put fake. I don't see anywhere in it where it talks about city council, you know, should have, you know, completely total input into design specifically.
Right.
And, and yet, there's a great deal of, of certain points in all of this where we should simply vote how we feel. Or if we feel it's too risky, that difference, then we should probably know about that. Just out of curiosity, do you have any estimates in terms of architect, design and architectural costs, they would be so-called this soft cost, right? Roughly, what's the estimate if you were to do this kind of bilateral type of, of design and concept moving forward? What would roughly that cost be in terms of soft cost? Can anybody give an estimate on what that might be? I'd have to refer to, to Wilson.
Um, well, this, I just have a thought, it's not a concrete. Now, we're basically the immediate after team, working on doing the dual design of the lower frame system and the structural and the foundation. Cost-wise, it's hard for the number, but I'll just throw something up there, it's actually a million dollars.
All right, of course, a certain amount of pre-designed stuff that's done, that's all right.
Exactly.
All right. Again, I think we've debated this thing endlessly. Personally, and again, I respect people's concerns around the cost, but I'm very hesitant to get into, you know, specific design issues as it relates to, I clearly believe we are at a point where we should simply vote this up and down, based on how you, how you feel is what your vote should be. And certainly, we spent enough time on Tuesday going through those various design components and discussions of this. And I think people have had some of their questions that are answered to it. I think you vote no, because that's what you believe, and if that's sufficient to carry the day, then people gotta come back with a different, different concept, I suppose. The same point in time, if you're moving forward at a later date with this G M P contract, and people are still not happy, and they think that it's too much, then there's another opportunity to vote no. That's what we do. We're the legislators, we're not the executive branch. That design conceptualization, that belongs there. We're here to vote as, as, you know, as best we can, you know, we even might consider who share responsibility to bid. But, you know, again, I think we've discussed this sufficiently. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor.